This is Dr. Stan Rose. I've been an educator for forty-six years, retired in 2019.
Good evening, everybody. Jeremy Berus. I am a proud graduate of Evergreen School District, and now I am a proud parent of a child in Evergreen School District.
Good evening. My name is Jim Zito. I am one of your board trustees for twelve years and is a middle school teacher. Thank you.
Chris Porcas. I am a retired Evergreen educator, thirty-seven years in Evergreen, and a current board trustee, currently the board president.
Thank you. So we're gonna get started, and it's one minute. First question. What does being a supporter of public education mean to you? Start with this.
Well, public education is the great equalizer. It is what people come to this country for. We are initiative after all. And it is, it is the value that we hold dear. The thing that gets people off to start to find the path that any person wants to go in their, is of their own life. Education is the pathway to their pathway. And so I have long been a proponent and participant in public education, making sure that all children get what they need to be successful along that way. So in terms of what do I need about equity, let's talk about that. That is every child getting what he or she needs to be successful to go along the path that they've chosen. And I will continue to be a proponent of that. And the way that I think that happens best is when all of the community is included in the process of education. That parents, community members, teachers, classified staff, administration, all are included in a conversation about what makes the best decision for students. So that's what I believe. Thank you.
For me, the public education is a statement that everyone has a fundamental right to a quality education, that everyone has the opportunity to learn, and that we leave no one behind. Because that's who we are. That's who Evergreen is. And like Stan said, you know, we need to include our community and include parent engagement. We're implementing processes, how we strengthen processes and practices, how we develop our children, our students. And we know that, you know, with public education, that we're providing quality education. We're keeping our community involved. We have quality teachers and school staff and a very quality school community. And I'm a product of public education. I attended Evergreen Elementary, Chauvoy Middle School, and went on to Sibber Creek High School, and then San Jose State University. I'm right back in the community where I was raised, where I was educated, and now I'm raising my own family.
Thank you for that question. A supporter of public education would be a parent, staff member, community member, or anyone really believes that public education is the right of all children to participate on an equal playing field. Supporters of public education keep in mind that their primary responsibility is to support the student, the family, and the community above all else. A supporter of public education is one who would use their talents and their time so that they could contribute, maybe not as a teacher, but their time and talent to ensure that equity is delivered to all students. My children, all three of them, are products of Evergreen School District, and Evergreen School District is a primary example of quality public education.
I'm not sure I can prove by all those statements. But what I must say again is that publication education really stands as the place, it's the gathering place for all the families in the community. And so the, the community school or the local school is where everybody can come together and share their thoughts about how to make the environment the best for all students. All students have, you know, want to be successful, and we should make it so that they have a, a place where they feel proud to be and where they have the facilities and the materials to pursue whatever they wish, because there, for each and every student, everybody has a different talent. And that's what we want to support, and that's what publication education is.
Thank you. I want to take this, just a second, and talk about the races that are actually going on. There are two. We have one that is, that for four years, three vacancies. And there's five that are done. And there's another that's for two years, two of you are looking, and that's all we would see. Took me a while to figure that out. And then I'll take one, but this is a commercial break. Could the ETA members here stand up? I want you to know that you don't always have teachers showing up at these events. You have a very active teachers association, but not just a teachers association and teachers union. You have one of the few teachers associations that have a very active scholarship program. And that's something that's very unique. You should be very proud of the teachers here that do that. Which I just wanted to say thank you for the community members, that the, the, the parents that are being helped, and the students that are being helped. So thank you for showing up. And those of you that want to ask a question, please. There's cards going around. Fill it out, and then we're gonna go through that. Second question, Jeremy, I get that you're gonna be up. Then we're just gonna, third one, fourth one. What do you believe we learned from COVID-19 pandemic? What actions worked, and what would you have done differently?
What I learned from the COVID-19 pandemic was that how we come together as a community. And I really saw leadership from this district. We have pop-up vaccination and testing sites. You know, we had, you know, our teachers and our school employees stepping up to, you know, help our, our students. And it was a really hard time, and, you know, we've seen our families fall behind, you know, whether it was because they're losing their jobs, or they got sick, or they lost a family member. And really seeing this district, the leadership of the district, come to support our students really resonated with me. And that is the same type of leadership that I would like to be part of on this board. I think when it comes to community engagement, we can do a better job finding out, you know, what were, you know, some of the things that fell behind on. And, you know, if elected, I will be a strong supporter of stronger parent engagement, having more two-way communication, helping our parents so that they can help their student at home beyond the classroom. Thank you.
So I experienced COVID-19 from two perspectives, that of a middle school teacher and that of a board member. And I can tell you that what worked is, is seeing people come together to try to put solutions together so that our students could learn. And what, all the time, keeping them safe, right? And keeping them engaged and involved. And lots of effort went into that on so many different paths, at the administration level, at the staff level, at, at the county level, right? What didn't work unfortunately is distance learning. I just have to put it out there. Distance learning, while it was our only choice at the time, did not work. And for the most part, many, many students fell behind. And we are now in a situation where we have to make up for that COVID learning loss. And that is one of the biggest challenges we have going forward, certainly over the next four years.
You know, my goodness, we survived the COVID pandemic and the, the accused of saying it's over. But we'll always have the, the flu pandemic, the COVID, that we have to deal with. But during that time, there were many decisions that were very fluid, or happened at beyond our level. Like I say, that the board trustees may have decided to do, go down a different path, but the higher levels, especially the health department, said that they're actually led the way. And so we, we tied in very carefully with them. One of the things that did work well was that we did bring in our very robust, rebuilt a very robust mental health program within Evergreen, and it's still going on. So that's, that's a good thing that came out of that. And the technology, thanks to the Evergreen voters passing the safety and tech bond, that really made a difference so that every student had access to the technology, which is very difficult, and it's why I've stopped doing it.
I think the very first thing that I learned from this pandemic was the critical importance of communication. The theme of communication runs throughout my campaign and inclusion involving people in conversation. I think this was a perfect example of how having a good system of communicating becomes a basis for making the important decisions that happen along the way. The other thing that I learned from this pandemic is, is the importance of connection for children. There were so many students who began to feel disconnected. And honestly, I think we have to acknowledge the, the socioeconomic component of the, of the pandemic for people of color, people with socioeconomic backgrounds, and how they suffered more, they died more, they got the disease more than the rest of the population. And I think we have to count for that as we communicate with each other. Thank you.
Just a minute. How would you handle community outreach and engagement?
Thank you for that question. Community outreach and engagement is at the heart of every good school district. It is very important to make sure we have stakeholder input on most of our ideas. Where we would handle it is, first of all, to support our PTAs. Very important that the PTAs at every school are functioning well and that they are connecting with our parents and getting them involved. Second, as we've had in Evergreen for a long time, we have parent diversity. Getting them involved, getting the parents again involved in actually learning with their children or teaching them how to learn. And the third thing is making sure there's lots of electronic and if necessary, paper modifications that go out. And meetings set up on a regular basis that parents can attend either remotely or in person so that they can give their input.
Well, that's the nature of the school board. Any, any public office is to engage and, and listen to the community and to communicate how the school district is addressing any of the problems or bringing any solutions. So that's, that is number one. Of course, the PTA is number one. Just every school site has programs where they bring parents together. And that's where we, we spread the information most quickly. Along with that, we have to make sure that we have the big trifecta, and that's translated for those who aren't very comfortable in English. Babysitting is also very important for families that are coming. And the big one is always food. If you feed people, they come, and they're able to then listen. And they're taking time out of their day, usually at night, and that's very important. And when you can't have a meeting in the morning and a meeting in the evening, if possible.
So for me, communication is really something that needs to be systemic and creating systems of communication that work. There's a whole body of research to support that that provides better outcomes for students. And so I would include all the constituencies that are involved in the district in the communication process so that the modalities that are necessary to make sure that the, that the important information that someone needs to hear becomes available to them in a way that they can hear it. That, that, that is critical to the part of communication that becomes part of the system. But the system is bigger than that. The system is both formal and informal. So daily conversations become acknowledged as part of the system too. So communication is a huge component of the, of the concept of outreach.
Evergreen School District is a very vibrant and diverse community, and that's what makes us really strong. And if we want to be able to communicate and reach our communities, we need to meet our communities where they're at, on their turf. We need proper language access. We need to communicate with our community in a very culturally competent way. Setting up, you know, opportunities to meet them on their school site, reaching out to our parent leaders, to our PTA councils, our school site councils. We talked about providing childcare. Text messaging is really good. I'm a parent, I get the text messaging. I got the text message for this forum for tonight. So, you know, embracing our diverse, vibrant community, embracing tech, you know, rapidly changing technology, and meeting the community where they're at.
Yeah. What are your, coming into office, what would be your top three priorities?
Well, the number one priority is always funding. Funding for the, any special programs that, that we might want to bring to our students. One of the biggest ones is the extended learning and, and facing the, the problem of making sure that kids who did have learning loss, that they were able to make that up somehow. We did have a very robust summer school during the COVID time. I think almost every school had something on campus. So that was very, very important. Couldn't duplicate that in the second year because of funding. The other priority would be, again, parent involvement and, and community outreach. Those are, those are things that are helping people understand what the school board actually does. What does a trustee do in concert with all the stakeholders, including families and students?
So you're gonna hear this theme a lot with me tonight, but setting up systems of communication that work from schools to school, from school to district, and from district into the community is a critical component to me. I, the how we get there, the road that we take to get to where we're going is as important as the destination, how we do, how we do what we do. So that's number one. And I think relationship building would be the next critical component. We're a relational business. That's, teaching and learning is something that happens teacher to student, relationship to relationship. So being in positive relationship with the community, I think is critically important. And then finally, one of the board's primary responsibilities is the fiscal health of the district. And I would be looking for alternative forms of income that we can tap to maintain programs that are critical to the district.
My top three priorities. Number one, you know, as we're climbing out of the COVID pandemic, that we're supporting our students and our teachers with social and emotional learning and teaching to address, you know, the trauma that, you know, we've been experiencing from the pandemic. And, you know, supporting that community, school, you know, model, where we're forming partnerships, and we are supporting our students with rigorous and measured curriculum, and we have evaluation process around that. Number two, that we're equitably and measurably distributing funding and resources to areas of the district that have fallen behind the farthest because of the COVID pandemic. And lastly, number three, that we are increasing parent engagement and involvement in the district.
Thank you for that question. Clearly for me, at a higher level, the number one is the physical, social, and emotional health of our students and staff and their overall physical safety on campus. Number two is COVID learning loss. You must promote programs and enrichment that is necessary to bring our students back to be learning at their grade level because they lost almost two years of learning. And third is to address our declining enrollment, which has a direct impact on fiscal stability that allows us to do all the things we need to do. And one way to do that, I happen to have a prop here, is marketing. Something I received in the mail just the end of the day from the Allen Rock School District, which basically promotes all their schools and basically tells all their community members what they have to offer. And we need to do more of that. We need to run our school district almost like a business.
So we're gonna start back around again, but I'll take another commercial break. You know, there are no ex-suprenteents. Once we've done that, you are that forever. So I see the current superintendent from Evergreen and a current board member. So if you two could introduce each other, I'd appreciate it. Which means, Stan, this means stand up.
I'm a Evergreen school board member.
I'm Dr. Hunter Hawkins, superintendent of Evergreen's district.
And then board member for Don't Bless. Here, guys, speak. Let me get you all. Superintendents live longer if they remember to reduce their board. Right, Stan?
Is that okay?
So, I remember you again. Stand as usual. As I said, I haven't been a second, but you're not up here yet. As a board member, you have no individual authority, but must work with four other board members to accomplish goals. How well are you able to collaborate with those you disagree with?
Well, I'm an old superintendent too. So you learn very quickly as a member of a governance team what you have to do to collaborate, to try to persuade people to your point of view, if you can, to understand theirs. And I have a history of building collaboration where I've been. And I think anybody that, that has followed the districts that I've been superintendent in or assistant superintendent in would, would, would be able to track my trajectory to do that. So I talked about relationships a little while ago. I believe there's a whole organizing principle that says the paddle is in your relationship. I would work to form relationships with board members, working with, to become a big governance team. I would want the superintendent critically involved in that governance team as well. And together, we would work for the betterment of students.
What really makes me unique as a candidate is that I have a really good relationship with all four of the current board members on the Evergreen School Board, and I have a good relationship with a candidate that's sitting to my right. So, you know, this is, you know, over years and years of building relationships. And if I'm lucky enough to get elected, I'll continue to build relationships, find common ground where we can agree on, and then build from there. That's, you know, putting our children first and our community first. And, you know, having that great working relationship. That truly key to moving our district forward. And I really look forward to working with the board when I get elected.
Thank you for that question. So collaboration is the exchange of ideas. It's also respect of each other's opinions and perspectives. And that's very important. Now, for twelve years, I've been working on the board with a plethora of different board members. And while I have been always agreed with them, and while we have gotten some very interesting conversations on the board, it is still a matter of respecting each other's opinions and working to come to some level of consensus. It doesn't mean you have to lay down and just say, well, you know, two people believe it and I don't, so therefore I have to just concede. No, you still have the right and an obligation to put your opinion forward if it is for the best interest of the district and the students and the families. We're working together, coming to consensus, and ensuring that it gets executed in an equitable way.
Do I give Jim's extra ten seconds? The most important thing as a, as a school board, any governing body, is to exchange opinions and to arrive at the goal of, you know, moving the school district's missions and values forward. And I've served just these four years, although I've been in the Evergreen School District for a long time. And from a board member's point of view, this particular board has worked very well together. Not, not always hunky-dory. We do have our conversations as we try to arrive at a final vote. But again, during the pandemic, that was really the measure of how we worked together in very stressful times. And again, just shout out to my fellow board members. I believe that we all work together very well, and I hope that we, we continue that. Thank you.
One of the board's primary responsibilities, hiring and evaluating the superintendent. What qualities do you believe are most important in a superintendent? And what criteria would you use to evaluate the superintendent?
So when looking for a new superintendent, I think, you know, having those qualities, making sure that they come from the community, that they under, they understand the community. And I think, you know, when we're onto a guy with them, I think, you know, checking in, having community engagement, hearing back from all stakeholders, hearing back from, you know, the feedback, looking to see how our district is performing, whether it's test scores or through, you know, other means of moving forward. But, you know, making sure that our superintendent is come from the community, understands the community, and represents our community.
Thank you for that question. I've actually sat through three hires of superintendent. When I first got on the board, we had our first superintendent that took over for Cliff Black. And I was told at that time, there was no need to go outside. There was no need to do a search. And I thought that was a little short-sighted, but that's what happened. We had a long-standing superintendent. After she resigned, we finally did go out. We were very happy and proud that we went out to do a national search to find out what is out there. It's very important that we go out and, and, and listen. People who are professionals at going and screening people to bring us the best candidates that the nation has to offer. But I do agree that we have to align their perspectives, their views, their fundamental principles with ours, making sure that they fit the community and to ensure that we can stakeholder input on what those qualities are. And we've done that twice so far. Dr. Torres, now, I hope we don't have to do it for many, many more years. Not for long.
That is one of the main jobs of the school board trustee. And that is to choose a superintendent and then to evaluate the superintendent. We don't rent the district at all, but in our conversations with the superintendent, we do set goals, and then we review the goals almost during the whole term until we, again, set another roll of goals. But, you know, like Jim said, we went to the, to the stakeholders and we said, what is a great superintendent? And what qualities would you like to see? And we wanted to see somebody that has a good fiscal leadership, somebody that can build trust and respect throughout the, the community, including the, the labor groups, and also very student-centered. And, and finally, a person that is out there and visible and talking with everybody. And so far, Dr. Hawkins is that person.
So the board represents the community to the, to the community. The superintendent represents the community's, the board's message, if you will, to the... uh, to the rest of the communities to have the goals and, uh, objectives of the district. Will be carried out. When the, when the district goes out to hire a superintendent, they look for a variety of competencies that, uh, that will serve that community. It has to be a good batch, you know, such as can a person walk on water, for example? Um, uh, because, uh, the job of a superintendent is very difficult. But, um, once you have that person, you want to support that person in being successful, in representing what the community needs and in carrying out the mission of the community. And then, uh, and you want to evaluate that person, hopefully in a positive way, to make them better at their job, uh, so that they can go forward and be even more successful. Thank you.
As enrollment declines, Evergreen will not have the funds to do everything they're doing today. How will you determine who to partner with to enable the continued delivery of the quality education our children deserve?
I'm sorry, hold on. Um, so if I understand the question, uh, question correctly, you asked, with declining enrollment, how are we going to determine how to still provide the, the necessary resources for?
And who you get a partner.
Who you get a partner. Okay, thank you. Um, essentially, it's, it's always a partnership. Uh, yes, declining enrollment makes it that much more difficult because we have that much less money to work with. But partnering with county, uh, Office of Education, partnering with public partnerships, and partnering with, uh, city and county officials to ensure that we are taking the best and most advantage of the programs and dollars that are available so that we can provide, uh, the, the enrichment programs and the learning loss mitigation programs, especially the social and emotional health and safety programs, um, that many other organizations provide, such as the county and the city. So we would reach out and partnership. Thank you.
Well, the, uh, the problem with declining enrollment was exacerbated by, by the COVID, uh, pandemic. Uh, but Evergreen has always been about making, uh, partnerships with nonprofits, with the city of San Jose, the county of Santa Clara, and, uh, to enhance the, uh, what we bring to the community. For example, YMCA provides, uh, a lot of after-school care, which is very important for many of our families. Also, the, uh, lately, we've had a program called the Young Heroes, which has, uh, they do an after-school and during-school program. And they are, they are role models for our children as they, uh, as they make their way through life. Uh, we also have many programs, uh, in the mental health area, and we're proud to, uh, to, to say that we are leaders in that area. So, yes, uh, partnerships are essential.
First of all, the funding formula for schools is inequitable and needs to be corrected. That is just a basic construct. It was never equal, going back to the beginning. Secondly, uh, we have a new, uh, opportunity now with the new community schools, uh, concept. But that requires us to reach out to all of our, all of our partners, local government agencies, uh, non-governmental agencies, uh, whoever is out there. We have to look for who's out there, and we have to, we have to connect those agencies that meet the needs that are in existence for our students with our students, uh, and find ways to bring them on board. So the creation of these community schools is really important, that we involve the entire community in the creation of those programs.
I think we're creating a healthy school community. You know, partnerships are really essential. Stand, the words ran out of my mouth. The school, the, our school, school commi- our community schools, you know, which, you know, the district got a grant to do so. You know, engaging with those community members, the parents, finding out where are the needs that need to be met, um, and being able to activate our community schools. Partnering with our city and county entities through our school linked services program that Dave Cortesi started many years ago. Partnering with community-based nonprofits, like Amigos de Guadalupe does with Allen Rock School District, the after-school program that it has at Lee Massey. Um, and you know, with delivering enrichment programs, working with our high schools at East Side Union High School District, like our speech and debate, uh, program that we partnered with at Super Green High School. So, uh, in order to, uh, provide a healthy school community, partnerships are essential.
What would the district, what should the district be doing with its excess problem? Um, well, we currently have, uh, two schools that are considered excess, and that would be, uh, Lorwood and Duffhill. And then we also have a parcel to May Avenue, a parcel near the, uh, the district maintenance yard. And so the, the main thing for our two school sites is, is not to close them, not to sell them, but to still make them, uh, an active part of the community and perhaps bring in these partnerships. Because we do have the space for, uh, for nonprofits to, to operate. Uh, and we would like it to, uh, be revenue-generated because, you know, the, who knows what's gonna happen in the future with our, our budget, but right now, our budget is okay. Uh, but, uh, it's cyclical. Uh, but mostly, we want to make sure that, uh, our, our excess sites still remain, uh, something that can bring value to the community.
Well, I think the answer to that question lies in the conversation that we have to have with our community about the best use of our property. I, I've always looked by this construct of, you know, once you have property, never sell it. True. So I'm starting from that construct, and it's really true in school district property because the way you have to offer property for sale in school districts makes it less, um, profitable to, uh, to sell it, uh, in, in the open market. It rarely gets to the open market. So, um, using it to maximize the revenue of a, of a, uh, district, of the property is one sort of way of looking at how you can use it. But then you have to also, uh, look at what are the community needs, desires, and so forth, and compare that to the amount of money that you can make, uh, on the property. So that's a conversation, and that has to happen first.
I think, you know, when, with our excess property, you know, making sure that we are meeting the need of the community that's currently not being met, and making sure that it adds value to our community and to our district. So, you know, having a very transparent, open process, engaging with all stakeholders, and figuring out, you know, what are some creative and productive ways of, of generating revenue and adding that value right back to the district and our community. So when I'm elected, I really look forward to having that conversation with the board.
Thank you for that question. With my eight years on the planning commission, um, we recognize the differences between the types of properties that we have. We have a small two-and-a-half acre property that's a zone residential, and it makes it a prime property to be swapped with another revenue, um, generating property, not surplus, because that requires to basically give it away. So to swap it for a revenue-generating, uh, property that would give us increased revenue every year. But the two school sites are community properties, in my opinion. Well, number one, all the properties that are district properties, about community property, belong to the college. So getting stakeholder in, input from each of the communities is essential. I mentioned before, and I agree with it. But also, there are many needs. Not every student learns and, and, um, learns the same way. You have different ways of learning. I would love to see that Lorwood and Duffhill return into a magnet school. Small schools, community engagement, and to really address the needs of the students that do not learn in the mainstream manner.
So do we have any questions in the audience? Can you post five on the cards? And if you do this, pass the floor. If you had teachers between a raise for teachers, meaning potentially larger class sizes, and keeping the current number of teachers along with current class sizes, which would you choose and why? He started.
Cheers. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the market for teachers right now is, uh, it's, it's a teachers being sellers, if you will, of their, of their wares. It's a seller's market. Um, we need good teachers. We need to keep good teachers. And I have spent a lot of time in the last years of my career trying to increase the salaries and benefits and the working conditions of teachers because they're the closest thing we have to our students. And every student deserves to have the best possible relationship with his or her teacher. And they can't do it if they're working two jobs, if they're spending their own money on supplies, if they're trying to make two in front work. It's, it's an untenable situation, and we have too many leaving the profession because of it. So right now, my money goes to teachers and the classified staff will support them.
Like I said before, teachers are the heartbeat of our district. You know, they're on the front lines impacting our children the most. And, you know, to be able to live here and to thrive in Silicon Valley and raise our families, we need to continue to support our teachers with, uh, competitive wages. That's how we increase the quality of education here in the district, is by empowering our teachers. That's how we retain quality teachers in this district. They're not going to other districts or other parts of the state. So my money's on the teachers.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Sure. If you had to choose a raise for teachers, meaning potentially larger class size, and keeping the current number of teachers along with current class sizes, which would you choose and why?
Okay, that's something I've been battling for, for many years. And, um, fortunate to say that this year, a board member that made the motion was supportive unanimously. You give out teachers a 15% raise over three years. I was happy to say we did that. We have the money to do it this year. Plenty of years we didn't have the money to do it. And I believe that class size is extremely important because many students, uh, can't learn in large environments. So if we have a good communication, we have a good working relationship, I believe there could be a compromise. I believe there's a way that we can minimize the increase in class sizes by still providing, uh, quality compensation to our teachers. There are many things that we could offer that are not necessarily dollars every time. There's health plans, there are other amenities, but dollars are important, okay? But life is a compromise. And I would work to have a compromise to minimize that size improvement so that we can maximize the dollars that we can give to us, uh, staff. I'm just teaching the whole of staff, because right now, it is a seller's market for every position. Our counselors, our custodians of staff, and so on.
That's, uh, Occam's razor, because how do you choose? Um, I like to say that, um, the school districts are our pass-through. We get money from the state, and then we, we give it out accordingly, uh, with balanced, balancing the budget as best we can. Uh, to say, when we choose a raise of a class size, I would say that we would work with the, the, uh, the, uh, labor groups, the, uh, the scientists of teachers, the classified staff, which is also a very important part of our group. So it's, um, yes, we do have to have competitive wages. Uh, we don't, we're not the highest, um, uh, district in terms of getting revenue from the state, so sometimes we're at a, um, non-competitive, uh, level. But yes, we do need to reward our teachers when we can. And, uh, and again, class size sometimes is governed by my law. But, you know, like Jim said, class size is, is very important. And, uh, again, it's not across the board. Some class sizes are small this year, and some are a little bit bigger because the kids don't all show up in the same numbers at each school, but we do our best to accommodate that. So we have two more questions in the closing standard. Uh, so the one from the audience, I'm gonna pair it down to that. How would you rate, uh, Evergreen School District in comparison to districts such as Palo Alto, Cupertino, and why? And I think it's out with you here.
Well, I think Evergreen School District is a, a great school district, and, you know, as far as, I put it right up there with Cupertino and Palo Alto. We have effective, quality educators. We have a wonderful school staff community, great administration. We have, you know, great parent involvement. Uh, we have California's distinguished schools. Uh, I put it right up there. And I know that, you know, um, you know, I would love to be part of the leadership team of the highest forming, you know, policy forming team on the board to make sure that we are continuing to deliver quality education. And I put us right up there with Palo Alto and Cupertino. We don't, you know, we're not a basic aid, uh, district, but we do the best that we can. We're, you know, gonna leverage our resources and make sure that we deliver that quality education, give all of our students across the district an opportunity to succeed.
Chair, thank you for that question. Um, I'm biased. I've been a school board member for 12 years, so I'd say we have one of the best school districts in, in the state. But I'm not the one who's rating. I look at my neighbors, I look at the community. And three houses sold on my block in the last, uh, year, and three of them was, was bought with cash, over $2 million. So money talks. And when I talk to my new neighbors, who all have children of elementary school age, I say, why'd you come here? They said, because you have the best value for schools in this quality California. They said to me, so when you get that kind of feedback, when they've done their homework and willing to invest millions of dollars to live in an area that has this kind of a school district, you know that you've got some quality. And it's important to have experience and leadership to ensure that that quality continues from this point on. And so, so that is really, uh, compared to Palo Alto and Cupertino, they may get more money per student. And I think we do follow each other, I believe, yeah.
Again, rating schools is a, is a difficult thing. It's always apples and oranges. But Evergreen has always been a leader in, um, how well our students are doing. And our, and we have, every school's been a distinguished school, and many of them have been a national blue ribbon school. So those, those types of accolades, uh, speak for themselves. We are an award-winning, uh, district, and it's because of the people. The, uh, the teachers, the classified, and the community members that always, uh, speak up and, uh, and, and participate in making this district the best it can possibly be. So, yeah, we'll go, we'll go head-to-head with any of those other districts, and, uh, we can do just fine. Stan?
Well, uh, I would agree with everybody here in the sense that, uh, Evergreen historically has been a highly regarded, uh, district throughout the county. Uh, you know, superintendent, uh, Evergreen was looked upon very favorably by other superintendents around the county. I imagine, uh, of our current superintendent, over there, experiences a similar kind of commentary when he goes to meetings. I do think we're, we're at a very critical point in our history. And I think we have to recognize that, uh, you know, the leadership that we need right now is one that is going to be an inclusive kind of leadership, that's gonna involve, uh, people, everybody that's included in this district in the decision-making process about what's going on here. Because, um, uh, this, this is a very, very tough time. We're all living it, regardless of the district. And we have to work together to continue the excellence of the district performance.
Thank you. Last question. How, other than through compensation, can the board show its appreciation of staff? And I think we're two, gentlemen.
I guess it's me. Well, I've been saying this for a while. There are many ways to show appreciation to all staff. And that is basically to listen to them, to try to understand their perspective, to make their work day as easy as possible. Right? Have the support, both social and emotional, and of course, health-wise, so that they have somebody they can go to. They can go to somebody. have somebody they can go to, they can go to somebody to express their opinions and their frustrations, and to get something done about it, okay? It's important that we recognize each person for the fact that they are individuals, that they're persons, that they are contributors, and that every person contributes something very important to the district. To, to respect them as an individual. As I said before, it's not always the money, it's the work environment. And I am in a school that I, that I teach, that we don't get paid a lot. It comes to the lower first level. And the bottom line is, it's how much they appreciate me that makes it easier for me to work every day.
Another tough question. Why do you keep doing that to us, Rob? But the...
They gave me these questions.
They gave you the questions. It's always about support. Again, compensation is, is always at the top of everybody's list, but respect and going out and, and meeting with folks at the, at the school site. I like to make sure that I go to every school site at least twice a year. And, but what I'm about to bounce, to be able to, you know, listen to what they're saying, and being part of that group that provides the tangible support of what they need in the classroom, and any other types of celebrations that, that help with that, you know, having work be fun. So let's try to make work fun, and sometimes it isn't, but as much as we can, you know, to get out there and be part of every, every school, and try to go and make the teachers as possible.
Well, for me, the first word that comes to mind is respect. The concept of respect for all staff, all participants, is, is where I would begin. And how do you show that? Well, these teachers and the classified staff that support them bring a lot of competencies to the job. So when you're talking about how to best do the job, include them in the conversation. They bring, they bring expertise to bear. Let that expertise be part of what goes into making a decision about what happens. Again, research will say that when people feel connected to the leadership, when they feel a part of what's going on, they create the internal accountability to buy in that they want, to participate, and to feel a part of something that's bigger than themselves. And I think that's really important, and especially at this time.
We can show our appreciation to school staff by including them in all district-level discussions. You know, listen and take their feedback. We have school staff who have master's degrees and special certifications. You know, we need to have a better two-way communication of how we're taking input and feedback about processes and best practices. And then increase the communication. You know, our teachers and our school employees are closest on the ground to the students and in our schools. Want to make sure that we're all, that we're listening and taking their feedback, and making sure that we're all communicating in an effective way.
So we're going to go to the one-minute closing segment. But before we do, Dr. R, because there's somebody just behind you that's been going through this whole thing, that I think actually runs it this way. So if you'd like to introduce her, because I got lost every day the first two weeks I was there, and she actually had to come and find me twice. So if you'd like to introduce her.
How is this a wonderful lady? This is Joanna Bierwial. She is our chief of staff in Green School District.
She looked for me three times, but only found me twice. So we're going to start at that end. Your one-minute closing statement.
Very good. Again, I'm ready for reelection, and I think, again, this school board that I was part of for the past four years has been very effective. We faced quite a few challenges, and a lot of the things we did were, whether it was mentioned here, and that was to, at that time, was to rebuild trust, to engage in more communication, and to make sure that all of our students had the resources necessary. We're going to need that going forward. Again, we chose a new superintendent, and a lot of that was through a lot of collaboration with the, with community members, with that outreach. And again, we wanted somebody who will lead us into the future. But my whole thing is, my ambition is to be a school board trustee in the best way possible. I have no ambitions for any other office. I just want to be a great school board trustee.
Well, first, I want to thank you for all attending tonight and being engaged voters. Thank you for supporting EESD through its bond and personal measures. Our community's got our greatest supporters. These past three years have been a true challenge for all schools across the nation, school closings, broken learning laws, declining enrollment, school violence, and teacher staff shortages, just a few of the issues. Up to this point, our Evergreen School District has performed better than most, but we still have a number of challenges to address these next four years. We have a brand-new superintendent, many new administrative staff, we have two bonds to improve our technology, safety, and school facilities. We've introduced new special ed, social and emotional services, and enrichment programs. And we still face declining enrollment, staff shortages, and deficit spending. These challenges report, or require a board with long board knowledge, leadership, independent thought, as which has been to break down the little skills. I have these qualities, I've been doing it for 12 years. Experienced in leadership matter, I've been a independent board trustee for 12 years, a middle school teacher for six, and a community advocate for over 25 years, always putting students, families, and community first. Please respectfully request your, your support, and visit my website at zenofoiexchange.com.
Just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and thank you to the District Day Community Roundtable. For so many years, over a decade, I was in those seats, looking up here, for the first time in my career, on this side, looking up at you. And this is your return on investment here. I grew up in this community, I got involved through the District Day Community Roundtable, I got involved through the Evergreen Elementary Education Foundation, where we raised funds for programs that are facing budget cuts. I served on the Measure H steering committee to help pass the extension for our partial tax back in 2014. And our district will have to make some very important decisions in the future. I want to be part of that body that's making those decisions. I'm running for the short-term seat, so I'm not running against any of the gentlemen on this, in this forum tonight. And I would appreciate your vote for some experienced, passionate community leadership. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Stan Rose, I've been an educator for 46 years, and a superintendent for 13, retiring from Santa Clara, where I served my last six years as superintendent in Santa Clara UFI. I've been in pretty much every corner of school life over the years, teacher, coach, principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent. It was, it was my teachers' union president who went to school in Evergreen, who came to me and asked me to consider running for the board here. We have a good relationship. We move with effective systems of communication, as I said tonight. They lead to better outcomes for students, higher teacher retention, and improved respect, doing better for our kids. Isn't that why we all are here? That's why I do the profession. That's what I want to do in Evergreen. There's tremendous talent in this district with several distinguished schools, and if I win the election, I will dedicate myself to building trust, which is necessary to affect the communication. I will help the students doing better, the teachers doing better, and Evergreen will do better. So please consider voting for me. ElectDrStanRose.com. Thank you.
Thank you. The candidates that came that had the opportunity to try and speak to you, I want to thank all of you for showing up tonight.